Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, December 24th. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That's not the 24th. How come, oh, it says the 24th. I was thinking, I didn't even acknowledge what I said.
It is not Christmas Eve.
Merry Christmas Eve. It is not Christmas Eve. It just came right out of my mouth. Thank you, team. That was a check.
We are not ready for this.
I didn't even, I said it and didn't even, okay. So we'll move on to the acceptance of the minutes for the meeting of November 24th.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second. All those in favor? It's just us, the other two are abstaining. Nothing under audience. School newsletters, we have Phelps, ECC, Rogers Middle School, and the Rockland High School. Any comments? No? Thank you for putting them all together. It's a joy to be able to read them each month. And then we have reports, we have monthly reports for administrators. Ms. Shipper, Rockland High School, Mr. McAllister for Rogers Middle School, Ms. Shifley for Phelps, and Mrs. Sheehan for Eston Early Childhood Center. Under guidance, we have Ms. Black. Nurse, we have Ms. Davis. And pupil personnel services, we have Dr. Minigula and Dr. Curtis Whipple.
If I can count, I'm gonna do eight motions to approve the monthly reports.
Eight seconds.
All those in favor? That's a vote. For our financial reports, we have the school department.
Motion to approve the financial reports for school department.
Second. All those in favor? That's a vote. Building rentals, we have nothing to add, just that the schools are super busy and it's good to see all the activity. Any questions or thoughts on that? Okay. We'll move on to old business with completed fundraisers. We have the Rockland High School Athletic Boosters. They did their toll booth with one to three locations, and they collected $5,492.26 with $128.02 in expenses, and they net profited $5,364.24. And that's good, good job.
Yeah, a lot of change, the change just adds up. We had some very generous people driving by our athletes.
Cleaning out their car. All right, and then we'll go on to new business. We have an MCAS presentation. Dr. Krone?
Thank you very much. Very grateful for the team coming tonight to help the presentation. Tonight, we will review our 24-25 MCAS results by looking at about 20,000 feet at each of these groups, special ed, English learners, Phelps, Rogers, the high school, and then a district-wide overview. So we'll start with Dr. Minigula.
Hi, thank you for being here.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Good. So the slide that I'm gonna be discussing is a summary of MCAS fiscal '25 for students with disabilities. So we'll look at ELA first, and we'll look at strengths. So our fourth grade students with disabilities showed good growth, actually 51 student growth percentile. The fifth graders had the highest percentage of students with disabilities, meeting expectations at 11%. And the average student growth percentage for all students with disabilities, grades three through eight, was 43. For challenges, 3% of our seventh grade students with disabilities met or exceeded expectations. And we did not have any 10th grade students with disabilities that met or exceeded expectations. Our sixth grade and our eighth grade students with disabilities, the sixth graders had a 35 student growth percentage, and our eighth graders had a 38 student growth percentage. Looking at math, a high percentage of seventh grade students with disabilities exceeded or met expectations when compared with the state. Our seventh grade students with disabilities showed great growth with a 58 student growth percentile. 6% of our eighth graders with, of students with disabilities exceeded expectations also. Challenges in the area of math, 52% of third graders, 54% of our fifth graders, and 65% of our eighth grade students with disabilities did not meet expectations. So across the district, we consistently look at our resources, curriculum tools, our instructional strategies, to make sure that we are using the most effective tools for our students and strategies. And on a positive note, it is important to say that our district, Rockland, outperformed many local communities that had similar populations. So I will introduce Dr. Curtis Whipple, and she will continue.
Good evening. Hi, it's nice to be here this evening, and thank you for having me. So I'm gonna share a little bit about the snapshot of what our growth is, and I, and for students with disabilities. And I wanna also remind everyone, when we think about MCAS, it's one data point, it's one snapshot in time, and it's something that we wanna look at long-term, and that's where the growth piece comes in, and I think it's important for us to really focus on that, because we wanna see where the kids maybe have been coming from each year, and are they, maybe they're not meeting where we want them to be proficiency level, but are they growing? And are they growing in the right trajectory that they're going to meet that proficiency level at a certain point in time? So this infographic shows you very quickly, if you look down the middle, it shows the different grades, so all the grades, fourth through 10th, and then on the blue, the turquoise side, is our English Language Arts growth scores, and then the orange is our math growth scores. And this is just focusing on the snapshot of students with disabilities. When we think about growth, we want to look at a range of 40 to 60 as being good growth. So when you look up that, at those scores, overall, our average student growth percentiles for ELA was 43, so we're right in that sweet spot of that 40 to 60, and on math, it's 41. So again, right in that sweet spot of 40 to 60. And we can also be really proud of that we have some higher growth scores there. When you look at seventh grade for math, there's a 58 there, so it's up towards the higher end of that range, which is something very excited, exciting for us to see. Any questions on this slide on growth?
I have a couple of questions just about our students with disabilities. The definition, is that students on IEPs, or how do we, okay. And then secondly, what is our denominator? Like, about how many students per year are we talking about?
Sure, so overall across the district, we have approximately about 200, actually, no, I'm wrong on that, I'll tell you right now. It's a little bit higher, 351 students across this district that would fall onto students with disabilities. But when we look into each of the different subcategories, for example, if we looked at our 10th grade cohort that was assessed for ELA, we're looking at approximately 33 students.
Right, so each, each grade is about 30 to 35 students that we're talking about?
That's a good ballpark figure to go with.
Okay. And then my final question is, it's probably hard to tease this out, but do we have any idea of, like, how many of the students, say, in eighth and 10th grade have come through Rockland versus have been transferred in? Because I think it's hard to sort of tease out how well we're doing when we have students that haven't been with us.
That would be a great data point to have. I don't have that for you.
Okay.
We'd have to look at it over time.
Yeah.
But that is something we could probably tease out long-term, but that is something to consider as far as if you're looking at the 10th grade scores, is, did that student just move in with us, right?
Right.
Or were they really here with us since preschool?
Right.
And all the way through. It is, it is interesting when you start to look at data and how you can dig down deeper and all the different components that can affect that final outcome score.
Yeah.
So that, that's called churn. We refer to that as churn.
Okay.
In the data, and I thought our churn rate was higher than it is, but it's not as high as I thought.
Okay.
So I would not say that our data is significantly skewed by kids moving into the district.
Okay.
Yeah, because I just looked that up, and it's, it's not as high as I thought it was.
Okay.
Rather well.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I know we're talking about the student growth percentile.
Yes.
Explain that a little bit more for people.
Okay.
It's their ability to continually improve their scores, like, I guess.
Right.
What are we saying that that target means?
So what does that target mean? So we look for, we wanna have kids, we wanna refer to as that we're seeing good growth, right? So maybe they did not reach that, so let's say they had to have a score of 100, just throwing that out there, right? Maybe they didn't hit that target of 100 to say that they were proficient on the test that year, right? But the year before, they had had a 50, and then that next year, they had a 70. They were not proficient, they did not meet that 100 goal, but the fact that they went from 50 to 70 in one year would be a large amount of growth. Does that help a little bit?
Yep.
Thank you. Sure. Okay. Could you go on to our next slide?
Yeah.
Thank you. So the next slide, it's focusing on our students that are multilingual, so students that may have come in and they had been identified as English not being their first language, and they have the asset skill set of having multiple languages that they speak. When we look at English Language Arts for this population, it was something, I, I'm not gonna read each one for you, but if you look at grade seven, we really need to celebrate that we had 8% of our students, not only did they meet the English Language Arts benchmark or the score that we wanted them to meet, they actually exceeded where they would have been the baseline point of meeting the scores that they needed. So they surpassed what we would actually even just say as being proficient, which is something definitely to celebrate. And then the other part, I think that is another area that we wanna celebrate, is in grade 10, we had 100% participation rate, and I know some communities across the Commonwealth are seeing lower participation rates, especially with the change in MCAS and, and the different vote that happened as far as how MCAS relates towards our scores across the Commonwealth. So to see 100% of our students participating is something for us to celebrate. And then also in math, when we look at our math scores for our students that are English learners, and I should also make sure that everyone understands, FEL means formerly English, an English learner, so they may have been tested out of our program serving our multilingual student, multilingual students. 10, 10 graders that were EL or formerly English Language Learner students maintain an average sales score of 480, which shows that they are persisting long-term. So when we look at them from the beginning of the time that we started assessing them to that 10th grade score, they are having high levels of achievement, which is something to show as a success. I just gave you some snapshots here. Overall, in the district, when we look at how our English Language Learners, our multilingual learners are doing, they are doing very well. And when we look across to the other districts, they're outperforming many other districts. The infographic below for ELA, the orange bar, shows that we were outperforming the state in every single grade level, and then on the other side, you can see the orange, the orange infographic shows that we are outperforming the state as well in math. So I really think it's something to say kudos to our staff, the kids, and the families of our multilingual students, and that we really need to celebrate the success that we're seeing across the district with all of our multilingual students. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job presenting for your first time here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm gonna talk about grade three and four at Phelps. We took a look at 2023, 2024, 2025. 2023, we were not Phelps, but we looked at the district scores. And when we look at grade three, they consistently hover around the state. It's always a good point to look at the state. How did the state perform? Obviously, we'd like to exceed the state, but it's always a good test because, you know, it's an average of everybody in the state. So in ELA, we were slightly below the state in 23 and 25, above in 24. We look at this MCAS data every year as our staff. And grades one through four, I'm the type of principal that makes even grades one and two look at it because we need to be sure that kids don't just miraculously appear in grade three. So we have to look at our strengths and weaknesses overall. And so we've done a lot of that work already this year. We found our strengths in third grade were vocabulary and language skills, sentence and paragraph organization, and believe it or not, literal and figurative language. Figurative language we did really well in, which is a really tough skill for the third graders. Our challenges were more main idea and details, author's purpose, and evidence-based writing. We saw some areas that we need to improve on. So our focus this year is to really look at our comprehension and our writing. We work in PLCs to do that, learn, professional learning communities, we work together to look at that. In math, again hovering around the state, a slight dip, a little below the state in 2025. Our strengths are multiplication and division, which is a huge focus of third grade, pictographs, and elapsed time, which is, again, a tough skill, and we got it. Right angles and simple word problems. And our challenges were number sense, rounding and estimation, multi-step problems, and fractions, and distributive property, believe it or not, is introduced in third grade. So our focus more is conceptual understanding and multi-step reasoning in math. We do have a math program that's relatively new, Bridges, and we found that it really focuses on that deep understanding, and we're working on, you know, beefing up some of the challenges that we've noticed. But if you look at grade four, I guess the story of Phelps is, and grade four, if you wanna advance that.
Oh, sorry.
Grade four is, by the time they leave Phelps, it's starting to really gel, and the kids are getting it. We have steady performance over all three years in ELA in grade four, slightly above the state in 2025, this just past year. We have a 50% student growth percentile. We don't have any student growth percentile in grade three because it's the first time they take the test. And in fact, that, that is one of the challenges of grade three, first time, high-stakes test on the computer. Our strengths are really in some deep comprehensions, like, all of a sudden they get it. Analytical reading, inferencing, point-of-view theme, we really did an awesome job on. Evidence-based writing, where it was a weakness in grade three. Our grade four cohort, it showed, really showed a strength, using text features and photos. Our challenges were more foundational comprehension skills, which was kind of, you know, we got the deep stuff, but the vocabulary and word meaning is an area we still have to work on. Main idea, details, author's purpose, and navigating through different text structures. They really focus on different types of text. Math, we're consistently above the state average. In fact, this year, we were 7% digit points above the state. We showed 54% student growth percentile in this past year. Our strengths are procedural skills, multiplication, division, place value, decimals, believe it or not, but that tough, that tough topic, they're getting it, angles, measurement, applied problem solving, equivalent fractions. And then challenges, these are the ones that really stuck out as a, as a, as a pattern, doing, performing operations with fractions, addition, subtract, addition, subtraction, multiplication of fractions. So that is our focus coming into this year. If you look at our grade four students, our exiting Phelps with those strengths of analytical reading and thinking, evidence-based writing, procedural math, and applied problem solving, and foundational operations in basic number sense. Our areas for growth that we notice is vocabulary, foundational comprehension, main idea, text structure, author's purpose, and in grade three, multi-step problem solving, and really solidifying our number sense. And then fraction operations in grade four is something we're really focusing on this year. Our next steps are working in, and we have grade-level PLCs, which, again, is professional learning communities. They meet weekly. We provide time to meet as a grade level to look for, look at our scores, not just in MCAS. I-ready, we use as a data point, DIBELS, and other teacher-designed tests, and we're looking for areas of growth and, you know, what items are really we need to work on. We have, we do, as I mentioned before, I have every grade level working on MCAS analysis so that they can see what part they might play in that MCAS. And this year, we formed an ELA Curriculum Council under the leadership of the state. We are attending state meetings as well to look at, really do a deep dive into our curriculum in ELA, and look at our, look at our data, and what, what kind of curriculum do we need? Do we need to make a change? And so we're examining that this year. So that's Phelps.
That was awesome. Any questions?
I just, I just think too, like, that having given the third grade and occasion the fourth grade, how intimidating these tests are, and how much growth you do see from when you start to when you finish. And just even navigating the, the computer, the first MCAS I gave was paper.
Yes.
You know?
Me too, yep.
And it's ama, it's amazing how far they've come, and how adults, in some senses, these questions are.
Right. And then by fourth grade, they, they, you know, they're more comfortable even just with answering.
The format.
Questions on the computer and how to drag and drop things, and yeah, so, yeah. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
There were three areas that we were really excited at Rogers Middle to see as far as growth is concerned. I'll start with our science department. We saw a nine-point increase in performance since 2023. Currently, the science department is two-point above the state average by the time they exit eighth grade. With our ELA, the English departments saw a four-point increase in performance since 2023, and they also had a two, were two points above the state average by the end of eighth grade. And our strongest subgroup are our multi-language learners. Our former ML students, 50% of them were meeting or exceeding expectation, and our access scores support that data as well, so they're doing a fantastic job. Areas to continue focusing on moving forward, our math department has seen significant gains since 2022, some as much as four points or 4%, but we were just below the state average with our last MCAS. So we went back to the drawing board and are analyzing that data. One of the difficulties we ran into last year is not getting access to the questions, so it was hard for us to be able to see where the students struggled specifically, to give us an opportunity to be a little bit more reflective. But we do have the topics that we can look back on, and then we're readjusting our approach in the classroom to, to resolve the, the area of concern. We're also had transitioned from I-ready to iXL. Last year, we did a little bit of dip-sticking, but it wasn't consistent enough throughout the course of the year. So this year, we're doing more frequent diagnostic testing, and we're using that data in conjunction with our MCAS scores to better gauge where our students are. It also gives us an opportunity to see how well our iXL diagnostic tests are matching up with MCAS scores. So can we use iXL as reliable data moving forward to gauge where our students are meeting proficiency and where they're struggling? With our analysis, data from MCAS, our access scores, iXL, and term grades are all continued to be analyzed. We're using that to drive our department goals at the beginning of the year. Right now, each of our departments are, are on their second year of a two-year cycle. So areas that we identified with our last MCAS, we're still in the process of weeding that out and making adjustments in the classroom with our practices, our day-to-day lessons and our assessments to, to remedy those scores. And then we're, again, gonna go back to the drawing board at the beginning of, of next year to reflect back on our scores from this year. I already mentioned the department using that data to build out our department goals and our, our building goals. The science department has done a great job of collaborating with our new STEAM department or our STEAM course, and we're in the process of weaving tech in there as well. Part of this was to give us an opportunity to better support the, the science department, where they had maybe gaps in their previous MCAS course, so going back two years, the biggest area of concern was with manufacturing technology and engineering. We're using our STEAM department to be able to do some of that, that hands-on work, some of that, some of the, some of the more important course build-outs, to be able to support what, what the science department maybe can't get to in their labs in the classroom. So they're, they're kind of supplementing that with STEAM. And then as the, the tech department is gonna roll over this year as well, we're gonna start to make some adjustments to that curriculum to, again, better support manufacturing technology and engineering. And just from last year into this year, identifying it as an area of concern, we've seen significant growth, which is nice to see. We've also added a number of labs. This year, we've already added four new labs to, to the eighth-grade science department just because we're able to unload some of that, some of those other labs to STEAM when they're gonna meet up with those students. ELA has focused their intention on writing grammar and spiraling their reading skills. We're re-implementing EB Academics, and we're going to refurbish Keys to Literacy. These are tools that we can use in each of our departments to allow us to streamline vocabulary, make sure that we're using the same terminology, the same definitions, and it provides us with a toolbox that each of our teachers can use regardless of their subject and grade level to better support the students. The biggest gains that we've seen is utilizing those tools from Keys to Literacy within our SPED department as well as our multi-language learning department. With the math department, they're adjusting their approach to reading and computation of MCAS questions. How do we approach word problems? Are we utilizing? Are we utilizing key vocabulary? So their focus this year has made sure that when they're testing the students, that they're using word problems as much as possible to give the students an opportunity to practice those skills going into the MCAS. IXL does a great job of giving us a list of those, those same questions as well, so we can utilize those skills in a number of different, a number of different areas over the course of the year and allow our students to continue practicing. And we can also get more consistent feedback using that IXL data with our teachers, giving them a chance to pivot over the course of a lesson, make adjustments as needed as areas of concern arise. The history department, although the, the MCAS with civics is still relatively new, so we don't have several years of data to be able to go off of, they're collaborating with the ELA department to work on document-based questions, the ability to analyze and assess primary source documents, and then to be able to build out argumentative thesis statements and making sure that students are using evidence appropriately to support those arguments. So it's not only a major part of the civics test, but it's something that they're working on in ELA. It allows our humanities department to be able to bolster the ELA skill set as well. So from grades five through eight, they're all going to be working on DBQs, and that also is going to transition into the high school as well. Any questions?
What, what are the access scores that you mentioned?
So our, our multi-language learner access scores allow us to gauge skills of proficiency with our multi-language learning students. So we try to use the access scores that, that our, our ML students are taking in January and in February. It allows us to use that data in conjunction with MCAS scores as well as our IXL data to gauge where our multi-language learners are over the course of the year. It helps us to identify target areas of concern, and then we can collaborate with our Gen Ed teachers as well as our tutors, as well as our ML department to be able to better support those students over the course of the year.
Thank you.
And Keys to Literacy I've used, and I love that, is that something that the kids come knowing? Is that something that's happening at Phelps as well? Okay, because that's, that was like invaluable to getting the kids to write for MCAS when, you know, when I was giving it and so forth, and I just thought Keys to Literacy was wonderful. So that's.
So we're, our hope is that we're going to be able to, we've utilized PD time with a couple of staff members to get retrained so that we can kind of come back to the drawing board and make sure that this is something that we're utilizing throughout the building, especially when looking at the support for our sped teachers who have small group pullout or whether they're pushing into the classroom, making sure that they understand that vocabulary, making sure that they know what those toolsets are, how to be able to utilize those tools and continue to support our students. So being able to use it with ML, our, our sped students, as well as throughout the Gen Ed population, whether it be ELA or history or science, just making sure that we have some common language, some common tools that students can expect and continue to develop proficiency in those areas of skills.
And if they're using it at the elementary level and it comes up to the middle school level, it's just that much easier for the kids to utilize and the staff to utilize as well?
And we've had an opportunity to collaborate with Cheryl as well, Ms. Shipper, excuse me, in making sure that we're, you know, at the high school level as well, as our students are transitioning in, that those ninth-grade teachers have an expectation of what our students are, what skill set our students are coming to the table with and making sure that they're prepared as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Thanks.
Really liking this. I like this team that we're looking at. I like the transitions from one to the next.
We're working on.
Good. It's humming here, it's humming.
Very good. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. So we'll start with growth. These are, these are some areas that popped when really looking at our data. Our ELA performance remained steady, on par with the state. But we did notice that some more students entered not meeting expectations category. So that's a bit of an area of concern, and it indicates to us that we need to make sure we're providing focused interventions so that we're looking at the data, figuring out what it's telling us and then next steps. Science remains a strong point. Students take biology in ninth grade and then the test. We are performing at or near state levels across the board in science with especially strong performance on written responses. Notable is that this is even with the maternity leave that occurred in fourth term for those students. So they had a substitute, long-term substitute, and still were able to score very high on the biology test. So that's very impressive about the work that we've done all year long.
Right.
So that, you know, during the last term, having a substitute, they were able to still do well. Our, our ML students were our strongest subgroup, scoring one hundred percent proficiency, which is really after, as Dr. Curtis Whipple mentioned, very, very impressive. It's showing that, you know, the supports we have in place for our ML students are working. Those students are excelling. Our extended engagement data was very encouraging. So this is, it shows that we're, we're keeping students connected to their education even if they're not able to make it in day school. So we have a number of students for whom day school presents a lot of challenges. Our night program, being able to have them transition from day school into our night program keeps them engaged, they're not dropping out of school. It gives them, you know, different paths to get to a diploma, and it's very successful for a lot of our students. So that data was very encouraging. So some areas of focus, we need to focus on our math. This is our most urgent area for improvement. We saw declines in achievement and student growth compared to last year's data and the state. Our lowest-performing students actually demonstrated some stronger growth, which tells us, this is a little bit interesting, it tells us that our students who are receiving targeted interventions are doing a little bit better. Not all of our students receive targeted intervention. So that's the trick, is getting all of our students tier-one support in the classroom, you know, not just the students who are pulled out for special education services or ML students, but every student. So that's a challenge. Our attendance is an area of concern. So we have chronic absenteeism, and that score declined significantly. We're seeing, you know, declined attendance post-COVID, and we're trying to rebuild. But this tells us we have an urgent need to prioritize student engagement and strengthen attendance-focused interventions. And we will continue to examine MCAS results, other data like teacher-created assessments and term grades to inform our department goals, guide our professional development, what we do with that time that we have at least once a month, and support data-driven instructional decisions. Excellent. Dr. Clark, please. So for next steps, as I was saying, we will use our data, our departments will use data, this MCAS results along with other assessment data, to analyze student performance, set goals, and identify the interventions that all of our students need. We will focus on school-wide literacy and problem solving. So all departments will integrate multi-step, writing and multi-step problem-solving strategies across disciplines to strengthen critical thinking and communication skills. So this is, in, this is, you know, how test-taking strategies, if you will. So this is in addition to, yeah, we're going to review the content that we've been covering all year long. But also something we see, for example, something that comes up anecdotally is in the math department, students get questions wrong sometimes because they read the question wrong. They, they know the math. If you, if you asked it the exact same way, they, they reviewed it, they would have done fine, but it's really about seeing questions written in different ways so that they can use other skills and get to the root of the problem and answer, show what they know. The math department is in the process of reviewing updated curriculum materials, selecting some new curriculum, and will incorporate that, you know, in the hopes of updating some instructional practices and improving student outcomes. So this is an area that we're really focusing on. The ELA, ELA department is, is looking at Keys to Literacy, so we have traditionally had that up to the middle school and then done some inter-school collaboration where we were looking at eighth grade into ninth grade. But we're now focusing on teaching it in ninth grade. This is in, something new to us this year. And Keys has a lot of strategies that are just basic strategies, note-taking strategies, organization strategies. And they can be helpful, really, I would argue, right through senior year for some of our students.
And beyond.
And beyond.
I shall use them.
And the like. So, so that's, that's new this year. Our, our focus right now is bringing it into the ninth grade and then considering incorporating it in the upper grades as well. Science department will continue providing explicit instruction on open response writing, which we are doing very well and demonstrating deeper understanding of the content. And as far as attendance goes, we are increasing our interventions for, you know, even, even tardiness, it's affecting our students, students who are tardy. So we're looking across the board at how to put systems in place to increase our attendance, hold students accountable for attendance, and, you know, partner with families to get their students here. It's important if they're missing instruction, it's having an effect on all of the things, you know? So, so we need them here.
I have a question.
Sure.
So what's another subgroup besides ML student groups?
Students with disabilities.
Yeah, like what's another subgroup? It says, students were our stronger subgroup, scoring one hundred percent.
Students with disabilities would be another subgroup.
So there's just two subgroups technically?
Yes.
And then the lowest-performing students?
Yes.
So you said the students that are kind of pulled out and get extra resources?
Yes.
Are doing better, which is great.
Right.
But like, what's the plan, I guess, for the students that aren't getting pulled out, like the average, everyday student?
That's a great question. So that's really about tier-one interventions. That's about looking at what can we do in the general education classroom for every single student to identify? So that's using data, right? Use data to identify this, and I mean even quiz data, right? Quiz test data, you know, run-of-the-mill formative assessment data, and identify what students need and then provide interventions. So sometimes that's grouping students together, and this group's going to be working on this with a teacher, and this group is going to be working on this over time. So it's, it's hard. It takes a lot of, you know, time and intentionality, if you will, to really focus on what every single student needs. That can be a challenge for teachers when there are twenty-four students in a classroom, as you can imagine. But it's the goal, and so that's something we're working on with departments to, how can we do that? How can we do it well at the limited time we have?
I just had one question. I guess it goes to the math scores. And out of COVID, I think it was the twenty-two, twenty-three year, I know Jillian was a sophomore when they had the MCAS-specific course. It was a full year long, which is not a stopgap because it then takes away a whole course through the year, and you're teaching to the test versus changing the strategies. But I just wonder, you know, the uptick in just that year maybe is why we're seeing a little bit more drop because we did put so much focus on that for one year only, if you will? I think it was only one year. I don't think we did it more than that.
I think it was two.
Was it two years in a row?
You might be right. It was one or two. That most certainly came up in our discussions.
Okay.
Did that help? I think for a certain student, they, it certainly helped students because they were having a second period of math.
Right.
Right? So sure, stra, math strategies, math review, all of those things. That was super helpful, I suspect, for many of our students. For some other of our students, it was redundant and maybe unnecessary and maybe not a great use of time. But overall, I don't think it hurt those students. But yeah, that class is, is the math intervention class is not happening anymore. So I, I wonder if that's having an effect here for sure. Thanks for pointing that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think just want to point out a couple of things. Number one, everyone here went to school.
Yes, here, in fact.
But what you're getting, what you're getting tonight is you're getting a snapshot of what teachers do when they don't have kids in front of them. So for the community, you know, we are looking at data sets, and this is one data set. So you give a midterm exam, that's a data set, tells you a lot. Dr. Small, I'm sure, gives tests all day long, and they show her which way to go. That's what this is for us. But this is more of a test of our district than it is of the individual kids. And the information that you've been given tonight from each of the levels is very ten-thousand foot. The teachers are getting under the hood by grade level. The other thing to point out is that this is a cohort-based test. So if you have a group of students who's in grade, they're not going to be the same the next year. They could be a completely different set of kids. And when you're talking about subgroups, those numbers can get small. So if you have a subgroup of two hundred kids and twenty or thirty of them tank, that really throws your scores off. So what I'm saying is, this is one data point, it's not the be-all, end-all, and it's very, it's very, very important. So for example, in math, one of the things that Ms. Shipper pointed out was concern about math scores. But at the same time, our, our, we were recognized by the college board last year for participation and outstanding scores in AP work. So it's not an indication of the health overall, it's one data point. So that's, that's what I really want to point out. And also, when we're looking at subgroups like special education or English language learners, the work that's being done by our special educators and our English language learner teachers is important, but it's our classroom teachers. They're the conductors of the orchestra of the classroom, and they are really being asked to, when we say differentiate instruction, my eyes roll in my head, because if I'm a third-grade teacher, I could see it in your eyes right now. Every year, you're being asked to differentiate more, and that means, it'd be like if Dr. Small had to do surgery and she had five different surgeries going on in her room, it's very, it's, it's confusing for the teacher. So each year, we're asking our teachers to get stronger and stronger. So it, it's, we're, this is the stuff that we're geeky about, that, that I think people at home think, well, I send my kids to school, they come back and they learn, and that's just how it works. But all of this work is being done outside of the school day. So analyzing data, so all the PD time that you so generously allow us to have, this is what we're doing with it. So every little decision, and, and the teachers go back into the classroom the following day, and they make adjustments all the time, constantly making adjustments. So I just really wanted to point that out. But overall, English language, our English language arts, the district has met or exceeded state growth expectation, and we keep, achievement is going up at the middle school and the high school. Math, post-pandemic dips seem to be stabilizing, and Estin and Phelps are showing promising early gains from intervention blocks. So lots of work being done to intervene. Science, performance trending upward, the middle school and the high school labs are being aligned to state frameworks, and again, paying attention to that data and trying to get more lab time in for the kids at the middle school. And then subgroups, our high-needs and EL students are demonstrating steady growth and ongoing, ongoing work to reduce variance between schools. So if you remember, one of our important themes for the last two years has been transitions. So looking at the transition into the middle school from, from Estin, so that's why we have dragged Ms. Sheehan out this evening, who's sitting here now presenting data.
I don't think we dragged her.
But the work that's going on, we, we have an early childhood center now, and that means you can really get in, under the hood of kindergarten. And the idea is to jack up kindergarten and pass those kids on to first grade with more skills. So there's a ton of work going on between, between the Phelps and, and, and Estin. So lots of work being done throughout the district. Overall, what, when I, if I had to take one thing from this data, what it tells me is the kids who are getting FaceTime with our professionals are doing better than the ones who aren't. And we've been scrutinizing our, our staffing because we've had to because of budgets. But when you look at how our kids are doing overall, they're doing exceptionally well. Our English language learners are, are really growing at a faster rate. So it tells me that the work, not just of our EL staff, but of our classroom teachers is very, very strong in that regard, and the kids are working hard. And I think that the, the attendance rates at the exam, especially the high school where... And I think that the attendance rates at the exam, especially the high school where, again, they got the news that it doesn't count.
I was going to say, but I held my tone.
But they're still taking it seriously. I think they're still tuned in. And so it's, that is our MCAS overview, and I don't know if you had general questions beyond what you already asked.
I was just going to say, I'm wondering, I will be interested in seeing how, I think it's our current sixth graders are the first kids that had a year at Phelps. And going to Phelps and having more access to technology and science-based curriculum than the kids before, it'll be interesting to see once they get to eighth grade how they do on science, MCAS, and then like moving into high school. And not to take away from anything anyone else is doing, but there was a lot of intentionality about Phelps and the resources that we had there for the students, so it will be interesting to see that move forward.
Yeah. And having the early childhood center, I think it's like having a little laboratory.
Yeah.
And you can hyper-focus on those kindergartners. And it's, and that's where, you know, we can't have a gap.
The connectivity, that's what I took away from this. You can't have anything great happening at the high school, great things are happening at the middle school all the way down. And bang for your buck for like those kindergartners, any penny you would take away from that group, you pay a dollar for later on.
Right.
So you have to, you know, they're really connected.
Right. Well, those kindergartners, by the time they hit Phelps, will be ready to learn as opposed to just learning how to be in school.
Right. And correct me if I'm wrong, like you were saying about the sixth graders, it's generally three to five years before you see like that global change. You might say a change within a year, but in terms of that big change, it's really the first graders who are at Phelps now, watch them when they hit sixth grade.
Yeah.
From a research-like standpoint.
That's great.
Not to veer off too much, but we're entering a time with AI where it's going to have a profound effect on how we teach and learn. I think, I don't think we're going to recognize what teaching and learning looks like in 10 years, quite honestly. And I think that it's going to become much more individualized, and the students are going to have more of a database right in front of them on their own scores, and they're going to be able to monitor it more quickly. Teachers are going to have free-up time to do different, to develop different skills. So we are in a fascinating time. But when you walk into kindergarten classrooms or you walk into Phelps, it doesn't feel any different than it did when I was a kid. It has the same feel, but everything around them is changing. So it's a fascinating time, and the MCAS data is one data set. And I know we look at them and we want 100s across the board, but it just doesn't work that way.
Well, right. But we're happy with what we're getting, so we appreciate that.
I have one more question, and this is more my ignorance of how long I've been out of school, but the MCAS connecting to SATs, because I think without the requirement for graduation, how can we say the MCAS prepares you better for SATs? Because I think once you hit junior and senior year, PSATs, SATs are more important than an MCAS. So is the curriculum or is the testing pieces of math and language the same as what we're striving for in MCAS? And I'm getting a little head nods, but I guess maybe, how do you keep reiterating that maybe is, you know?
Very different tests. So the PSATs and the SATs are a great diagnostic for a teacher. So we have many, we at one point had every kid take the PSATs because it gives you, it'd be like having a blood panel done where you got 500 points in your blood, you know, tells you all these things. And the PSATs and the SATs go way under the hood. MCAS was always meant to be proficiency. It was meant to be a floor. It was built to be, no kids will fall under this level. So for our top, for our top students, the MCAS is an afterthought. But for our students who struggle, it's, you know, a challenge. So whereas the PSATs and the SATs are designed to say, are you going to be successful in college? So that goes all the way back 150 years. So it's a little, it's a little different.
And not everyone is taking, not everyone is taking that, so just quite curious how that translates.
Yeah. Yeah. The PSATs and the SATs are a great test. They give you, they give you feedback, they give the student feedback that says, if you want to move from this column to this column, do these 15 things, which is great. Whereas the MCAS is a little more vague. Any other questions?
It's a one-day test, even on the SATs. You know, you could have stayed up late, not had breakfast, been tired.
Tremendous amount of work by the people behind me. It represents a tremendous amount of work, and not just all of you, but our teachers, our technology department. It's quite an undertaking to do this test, and what I always say is, if we're going to take all the time and spend all the money to do the test, use the data.
Right.
So oftentimes, you get through the test and you go, well, that's done, and off we go. No, use the data to help you get better, and I think our folks are doing that. So hopefully tonight, you've gotten to see a little bit of the work that goes on when we don't have kids in front of us.
I have another question.
Yes.
How frequently does MCAS change?
It's changing, it changes quite often.
So, you know, a test that you gave to fifth graders two years ago, it could be equally harder than, like, people are always putting in different questions and, or they keep moving the needle on what they're asking people to learn. So I just was curious of, you know.
Work in particular does.
Yeah.
They'll have a specific skill set that they really want to focus on, and they have significantly more questions on that skill set than maybe the ones that they did the year before. So if this is the challenge, when you identify an area of concern, you do a lot of work that year to say, how can we remedy that? What could we change on our end? How are we teaching the students this skill set? And then you might only find five questions on that skill set the next year.
And they hammer another.
Hit with 20 questions in another area. And then it's like, oh my God, we gotta, you know, maybe we need to rethink that approach. So I think math in particular is a lot more difficult when gauging how well those students are doing year after year, which is why I think when you look at math, MCAS scores, it looks more like a roller coaster. Because one year, it's like, wow, we're five points up, and then the next year, it's how are we, you know, one point below. You know, and a lot of times, that can just be what the building's focus was that previous year. You know, and if you're not assuming or guessing right, you know, so to speak, then, you know, you might end up with a dip in those scores.
Fun times.
It is. It's the stuff we geek out. I say spreadsheet, and Jane's eyes light up. I say MCAS, and I get excited. Anyway, thank you.
All right, no more questions.
Thank you.
Oh.
Now we'll move on to competency determination.
Hello again.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. So I believe you all have documents in your packets. So you may be wondering why I'm here talking about competency determination when we talked, you approved a policy change last year about this, you might remember. So the Department of Education, this summer, released an edict that we needed to create competency determination policy, one-page policy. That includes an appeal process and is approved by our governing body, and we must post copies of it on our website, and translated copies must be available, and that must be submitted to the Department of Education by the end of this year, meaning December 31st. So there's a one-page document here that says Rockland High School competency determination policy proposed. I just was hoping you guys would look over this. You will find nothing really new here. The change is that in order to get a diploma, if you jump ahead to where it says, step one, what must students do to get high school diploma? Students must participate in high school MCAS testing sessions in ELA, math, and science. We know that, they must participate.
Right, not pass.
Step two, students must also receive passing final grades in the following courses. These are outlined very specifically because they are the graduation requirements prior and including grade 10. We don't expect students to stop at English 10, no, we do not. We expect them to go up to English 12. But competency determination is defined in grade 10. Does that make sense? Because it's aligned to when MCAS happens. And it goes on to talk about the fact that the principal can, on a case-by-case basis, interpret, let's say we have a student move into the district, and this student took different courses. The principal, and of course, with the help of the guidance department, can review their courses and make decisions based on, oh, this aligns here, this aligns here, and so forth, or this student might need to take this class. That's a principal's discretion. So that's it in a nutshell. It's just this new policy, they asked us to create a one-page policy summarizing our graduation requirements up till grade 10, including grade 10, and the fact that they must participate in MCAS testing. I included for you the graduation requirements, which you've seen before. So there's really nothing new here, except I'm asking you to approve this policy so that I can upload it into the DSE website by December 31st, please.
Any questions?
What is the vision of graduate e-portfolio?
Oh, okay. That might be another meeting, actually. I don't have any materials with me. So beginning with the class of 2027, we have Vision of the Graduate, which is six competencies that students must demonstrate throughout their time. So they start in ninth grade. We're starting, we're graduating this in, if you will. So the graduating class of 2026 does not have to do this. I'm happy to come back with a presentation and show you guys in more detail at another time. Class of 26 does not have to do this, but the class of 27 does. It is a graduation requirement.
So it starts in ninth grade?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And so one of the areas is students have to demonstrate critical thinking. One is that they have to demonstrate communication. So it's different competencies, if you will. So it's kind of focusing on skills rather than just, I gotta be in biology. And each year, in theory, students will grow and do better. So if we talk about communication. So in ninth, in ninth grade, students might, and the student has the agency here, which is something I really like about it, because they get to look at themselves and say, hey, I think I did really well in terms of communication on this assignment. And their teachers will give them a number of opportunities throughout the year to demonstrate communication. It lends itself more specifically for different content. For example, history and English might be your areas for communication, a little more critical thinking, you know, math, science. But that doesn't mean that you can't go outside of the.
So would this be like the old portfolio assessment?
It's basically like that folder that we used to have kicking around the district where students put exemplars of their student work into. It's an online portfolio now. So back to the student growth thing, students would, in ninth grade, they might say, I'm going to show that I demonstrated strong communication because I did this project and I did really well on it, and they're really proud of it in ninth grade. And in theory, by the time they are 12th graders, they're going to say, oh my gosh, I can communicate so much better now because I'm smarter and I know more and I have more skills. So in theory, I think it will help students understand how much they've grown in areas. And, you know, it will help them kind of think of themselves as learners.
Lifelong learners.
I was just going to say that. Lifelong learners and people with skills who are able to do jobs and move out into the world. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so it's a one-credit. So that's a graduation requirement, starting with the class of 2027.
So I'm so old that prior to MCAS, I had gotten portfolio trained through Bridgewater State.
Sure.
And it was something that they were going to implement at one point in time, and then somebody went, you know.
Forget it, too much work.
Right. But it was, they were amazing when you had them all together. And for the kids, for me, it was good because I could see the growth, and it made me feel better about what I was teaching.
Right.
But for the kids, it was mind-blowing.
Right.
You know? That's great. Thank you.
Great. I think that conversation with one of your teachers to say, I think this was exemplary, you know, if you're getting As and Bs, or even if you're getting, you know, a C or something.
Yes.
And this really was a great piece of work, you know, goes into your portfolio. You can see it in Aspen on different assignments. It has the VOG next to certain assignments. So it's pretty interesting. I don't know, you know, Jason is a junior, and he's not sure if he quite gets it, like, that I need to have this, like, portfolio, but.
So the portfolios that I had done when I had your children were supposed to originally start in kindergarten and go all the way through. So.
So one thing we've understood, we've heard from students, they're like, what is this? Because we did presentations, like whole-class presentations about Vision of the Graduate and included information for parents, but still, students would be like, I don't get it. And so we've kind of recognized that, and we put in, you know how we have the dog block at the high school, which comes up once a month? We added vog dog blocks, which I think is cute, vog dog block. And those are for the purpose, express purpose of going over where they're at with, I'll call them an advisor, so they're with the same teacher for vog dog blocks, three times a year. We're going to try three times a year this year and see where the kids are at the end of the year. So they have two teachers assigned to them, they'll look through what they have in their portfolio, and in some cases, kids don't have a lot. And some of them are like, I need to have it all done by October.
Right.
Because that's the type of student they are. So with the time commitment, that's 50 minutes, we're dedicating three times a year for teachers to work with students, students, you know, carving out the time for the students to go over where they're at, what they need to do. So we're trying to help students get where they need to go, and we're, you know, we're all learning this together as we incorporate this into our school.
Excellent. Great.
So we need a vote.
So before we vote, we will need to vote again next year when Jane Hackett is no longer Assistant Superintendent, unless you want to change it to appeals, just go to a blanket person? Just putting it out there that we.
I think that overlaps.
It overlaps, and you could just change.
I thought of that. I wasn't sure how to handle that.
I don't know. I mean, maybe it's because it's just a name change in the document, we wouldn't need to.
Suppose I could not put the name.
I would leave it as it is.
Okay, perfect. All right. Okay. Just wanted to bring it up. All right, motion to approve the RHS competency determination policy, 2025.
Second that.
Second it.
Second it, sorry.
You need to sign.
Right. All those in favor? That's a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to new fundraisers. All right, yes. Okay, we have the multicultural club did custom button pins, and they'll be selling those. And then we have the Rockland High School Girls Basketball is doing a free throw shoot-a-thon. And then the Rockland Boys Basketball is doing a Snap Online fundraiser.
All right, three motions to approve the fundraisers.
Three seconds.
All those in favor? That's a vote. And then we'll move on to capital request for FY27. You all can go if you'd like. We usually let the kids leave. Did you look at him?
I'll be brief.
You can.
You can't go.
You're welcome to go if you want. But we're hanging out after.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah, so let's just tell the whole public, we're hanging out after.
Our FY27 capital request is down 800,000 from last year. We requested $1,950,000 last year. This year, we're requesting $1,175,000, broken down into one, two, three, four, five categories. Building security, network security, building needs, instructional materials, and the maintenance department. Everything that you see in yellow are carryover requests from FY26 requests. As you recall, we went through some negotiations with the town in utilization of free cash, and they were able to support us in balancing our budget and taking ownership of some of the out-of-district tuition costs. So really, the new items that you'll see in here is the RHSS math program that we just spoke about, although in some ways, it does not meet the definition of a capital need. Mr. Lappett Town Hall has expanded what he is interested in reviewing this year, and anything that is over $25,000, whether it's recurring or not, and it's new, he'd like to be aware of. So some of the items on this list are not what you would ordinarily see in a capital improvement plan. And Mr. Visconti, that we brought in for the maintenance department, is working with the IT department closely in developing a true five-year capital plan that meets statutory and industry auditing standards for that. So if you have any individual questions regarding either the building or the network security, after discussions with legal counsel, that's something we'd be more comfortable discussing outside of a public forum for security purposes. And for the building needs, sort of the big-ticket item here is our rooftop units. And it is time for us really to do a building assessment, needs assessment, and make sure that we are prepared and Town Hall is prepared to partner with us to keep this building within the intent that we need. So if you have any particular, another request that really could become urgent in the current year, and we're gonna be meeting with Mr. Taylor from the town, is the truck with the plow, package, and the sander. This is something we put off last year. Mr. Shum has had conversations with Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor, too, is concerned about some of his equipment and the competition that there is out there for snow removal. I know we had some issues specifically at the Phelps with the early start and some dry ice, et cetera, last year, and that's something that we don't wanna see occur again. And notable and new is the auditorium. We've had many failures in the auditorium over the course of the year that has impacted both teaching and learning and presentations to parents and families. And that's something that we really wanna address in the near term. So happy to answer any questions. Overall, it's about 1.2 million, and around 700 of that is from last year that we've rolled over into this year.
Just a point of reference, the high school and middle school is from 2011. So even though we think of them new, they're relatively new in what we have for buildings, but they're not necessarily relatively new.
Anymore.
Right.
Lights, boilers, networks, Wi-Fi.
Right.
Big-ticket items.
Big-ticket items, HVAC, et cetera. Building management systems are all coming to the end of their useful life.
Any questions?
No, I like how we have the forward-looking five-year costs. Just obviously, people aren't seeing the handout, but it shows what is reoccurring, what might have cost inflation, what might actually fall off the books. So I think it's a good plan to have to show what the needs will be. Obviously, not all needs are presented in the future years, but at least it shows what is those recurring things that sometimes we forget about that are not the new one-time fixes, but are payments we have to make every year.
And I think next year, when we're presenting this, you're going to see a lot more detail regarding specifics of HVAC, boiler, et cetera. You've seen the work through the reports. Yeah, I'd really like to thank Chris Howe, IT, has really hit the ground running. You saw his report in your last, at your last meeting, and he's had a lot of good work on this. And we'll be meeting with the principals individually to make sure that this plan is reflective of these needs, and I'll come back to you if any adjustments.
All right. We do appreciate Chris's work. This is his first year, right, without Tim? So, yeah, he definitely has hit the ground running. We appreciate that.
I just have a question regarding the lights at the high school, middle school. It says.
Yes.
The clean energy grant. Is there.
Yes, we did. Before, right after, right before I got here, the former assistant town manager's name, who I can't remember at the moment, worked with Mark and got a green energies grant that was able to do most of the lighting fixtures, except for the third floor of middle school and all of the classrooms. We did all of the, updated all of the general lighting under that program, and we're hoping to do that again. And that's something that we wanna work with Town Hall, with Mr. Visconti, to realize. So there are many funding options for this 1.2. It's not a straight-up request for 1.2 million in free cash from the town.
Okay. Any questions? More? Any questions? Okay. Motion?
Motion to approve the capital request for FY27.
Second.
Do we need to say the number or that's good?
No, we do not.
Okay. All those in favor? And that's a vote. Okay. Now we'll go on to Dr. Kron's superintendent request.
I have nothing this evening.
Fine. We'll go on to our public services.
You heard my voice plenty already.
I'll start to the left, Dr. Small.
I also have nothing.
I have nothing.
Ms. Davidson?
I just noticed that there was a coat drive at Phelps that's ending on the 12th, so bring in your coats. And if that doesn't work for you, the library uptown is also doing a coat drive. Or if you need a coat, there's just a rack, you can go pull one out. That's all.
Thank you.
Other than happy holidays, I can't believe it's two weeks away. I have nothing either. Thank you.
I just wanted to add this one quick thing, and then I will let you go. I saw this in our newsletters. At the Esten, they did the balloons over Broadway, and they did their own, like Macy's parade going through the hallways.